Greetings all, I'm opening the November seventeenth, twenty twenty five's Planning Board Meeting. For those that are able, please join us and rise with the Pledge of Allegiance.
That's right.
Oh, it's the other way. Thank you, Roger.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Thank you very much. Doreen, would you take the role?
Rick Meinke?
Here.
Rachel Henderson?
Here.
James Seabird?
Here.
Roger Bailey?
Yeah.
Tyler Davis?
Here.
William Sedlec?
Here.
And Jennifer Lads via Zoom.
Here.
Hi Jen.
Hello.
Glad you could join us. With that, we're moving to the approval of the minutes. We were provided the minutes from the meeting last month, October twentieth, twenty twenty five. I would entertain a motion to enter those into the record. Thank you, Roger. Second?
I'll second.
All right. Thank you, James. Any discussion? I can't see Jen's head or any. That's okay. Okay. With that, Doreen, would you take the role?
Rick Meinke?
Yes.
Rachel Henderson?
Since I was not here, I abstain.
James Seabird?
Yes.
Roger Bailey?
Yes.
Helen Davis?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I was also not here, so I abstained. And just to confirm, am I a voting member?
No, we have a full voting roster.
Yeah.
Tonight, but we'll be seeking your input.
Beautiful.
All set? You got what you needed, Doreen? Yeah, he turns the lights on. All right. We have a few items under consideration tonight, but I think we can power through this. The first one being four point oh one, hold a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed amendment to Chapter four oh five zoning ordinance, section nine, off-street parking. No, that's section eleven, isn't it? Off-street parking regulations and section five, Board of Appeals to amend parking requirements for residential uses and to amend site, off-site parking requirements in accordance with LD four twenty seven. And I think Autumn, you're going to run us through this.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So LD four twenty seven was passed earlier this year and put into law. It's actually supposed to be, takes effect in September, so we're a bit behind, but I think we're ahead of our neighbors. This is a two-part ordinance. It has to deal with limiting the minimum parking space that's required for residential units. And so this has gone through the Ordinance Committee in first reading at town council. This is, the law essentially says we can only require one parking space for residential unit. And so in your packet is that group of amendments for our parking tables. And there is also some provisions to change off-site parking agreements, increasing, we currently have a three hundred foot distance requirement, but the new law allows up to a quarter of an acre, which is a little bit over twelve hundred, uh, twelve hundred feet.
Quarter of an acre or quarter of a mile?
Quarter of a mile, excuse me, twelve hundred feet away, that you can have a shared parking agreement. And we also did a little bit of cleanup. We had a Board of Appeals provision in our ordinance that allows the Board of Appeals to do a reduction in parking, and it was a bit redundant with planning board in-site plans, so recommending that we remove that just for clarity. With that, I am happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Autumn. And this item is available for public comment. Anyone wishing to make a public comment, please go to the podium. Seeing the crowd run up there, that's not happening tonight. Anybody online?
Have anyone?
All right, we're closing public comment. And I just have, before I turn it over to my colleagues for any of their input, I just have one question, Autumn. The law stated a rulemaking process on this. Did that happen, or what, you're privy to that?
I have not.
And I'm sorry if I put you on.
Oh, sure. No, I have not found any rulemaking for this one. There is rulemaking for eighteen twenty nine, but I haven't found anything applicable for this one yet.
Okay. With that said, the, the only thing I have to offer here is if rulemaking was not, hasn't been done yet, I would urge the town to maybe get involved in that. And when it comes to uh, satellite parking, that is a quarter of a mile or less away, that local planning boards could have some jurisdiction on safety and throughway authorization. And I say that because there could be instances where that quarter of a mile distance would require the patrons of the business, of those going to that business, may end up walking on a throughway or on a, on a trafficked road. And I would like to make sure that we had a way to ensure that we are taking under consideration the safety of the patrons that are going to that business. That's all. And if plan, if rulemaking has already happened, it's a moot point at this time. But you never know, somebody might want to make an amendment to the public law in the next session or what have you. That's my only input, and I open it up to the, to the floor here. Roger, you want to add?
Thank you. Yeah. I have to tell you, I had to read this thing a few times to really understand it, and it's probably me. But when I see where it says, I mean, and I think, I'm thinking about like any place where there's apartment complexes or anything like that. Any municipality may not require more than one off-street parking space. So that means we can.
No, you can't.
We cannot.
That means they get one parking spot per dwelling.
It's bad writing, but it means you can only. Yeah.
Well.
Is this what, is this what you were sending an email the other day to Helen about, about the May versus Cho?
Yes.
This is, this has been legally vetted through our attorney. We cannot, what this means is we cannot require more than one space. It's.
So, so, I mean, this, I, I think this law was designed for urban areas primarily, okay?
No, this law was really designed to support the development of additional housing units in the state of Maine.
Right, in urban areas though.
Well, I don't think it was defined as urban or rural, Roger.
That's my interpretation.
Okay, but I don't think that was the intent of the law.
Okay, so, I mean, to me, this, so you're basically, what this is basically saying is there's only one parking spot allowed per unit in like any apartment complex or condo.
We can't mandate any more than one. Now, a developer could put in two per unit if they so choose, and it's within.
Oh, is that?
Our.
So that's what that's saying is we can't mandate more, but a developer can put in more.
Correct.
So they choose, if they choose.
Okay, all right. I'm fine with that then.
Okay, well, glad we cleared that up for you. Anybody else?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, Rachel.
Yeah, I, I, Roger was articulating something that I've been concerned about, about the law, and there's basically little that we can do about it, but it really is one size fits all. It fits, it, it doesn't fit an awful lot of the territory. And I suspect a lot of people were thinking in terms of Portland or Lewiston, probably not even Bangor, when, when this went through. They weren't thinking about Cherryfield and Redfield and some of the smaller towns and what this might do. But I did notice something in terms of the law, and that is that it mentioned something near and dear to my heart. It says a municipality may impose maximum parking space requirements. I have, in the past, opined that we needed, as a board, we needed the ability and the authority to say, I'm sorry, you cannot build, you cannot build this much. In other words, we have attempted to jolly a developer into saying they really don't need five hundred spaces. They only need four hundred spaces. But we've not really had the ability to do that. This law gives us the ability to do that. And I would suggest that if that ability is not codified in our ordinances, that's something that should be investigated and so codified.
If I can just correct that just a bit, we've always been able to put in a maximum for our parking. This particular language only applies to the residential development, but we can still put in a maximum for our other parking requirements. So in commercial, if we require four per thousand, we could set a maximum today at eight per thousand if we wanted to. So we can, we can still do that. This particular statement.
Autumn, I don't think we've ever done that.
We haven't done it, but we've talked about it in long range, and we just haven't moved forward with it.
And, yeah, and it's been in long range, but it has not moved forward. And it's something that the planning board has, would have jurisdiction over determining how to apply.
Yeah, but we can do it. I guess that's all I was saying is we're not.
It's not limiting our ability to be able to do it based on this law.
Right, based on this law, it says we have the ability to do it.
This is for residential units only. This is, this is explicitly talking about, so in the, let me share my screen.
Yes, see, that it's for residential uses.
Yeah.
Yes, I, I understand that, but I, what I'm saying is this is something, the concept of maximum parking spaces was something that we have wrestled with, whether it's residential or commercial. We have consistently wrestled with it. We have heard from the public about objections to giant spaces. Luckily, we are now seeing some attempt to reuse some of the large parking lots, particularly, for instance, the Martin's parking lot. I, but that's, that's kind of in hindsight. It's been a vacant lot in effect for a long time, an asphalt heat sink. But I am opining that it is time, since we also have the concept here allowing us to do maximum lots, that it might be time to take a look at doing some ordinances around maximum parking, whether it's residential or commercial.
Can I add something to the conversation? So we are required to do a low-impact development ordinance by the state because we're an MS four community. And part of that, one of the criteria we need to check off is looking at setting a maximum parking. To your point, it's going to be part of a larger conversation. And so I'd love to get kind of some feedback as we go through that. If long range has been, is the avenue for that, I'd like to hear kind of where, how far we take that. But it will have to be part of the conversation around that larger ordinance that is coming in the next few months, I would say.
So I guess from what I'm, I'm taking here, our feedback would be to engage with, maybe it's the long, long-range planning to try to help us navigate through this minimum-maximum thing in commercial parking lots so that we have a little bit more as the planning board, some clarity on where our boundaries lie. And so that we don't over, overbuild parking spaces, at the same time, understanding that applicants have needs for whatever use of the building there are. We should be able to listen to that. And the burden of proof for them, it, the burden of proof is on them to demonstrate to us they need those parking spots. Is that a fair summary?
I think it is. As I start to wind up my term on the board, I'm looking to clean up some of the things that have.
Keep working at it.
Been hanging fire for a while that have, that I, where I thought we've either gone astray or we should take a look at how we, how we think about some of the things. And I think the concept of a maximum parking, a parking lot is, it's time. And whether it's residential or commercial, we only have a certain amount of space left, and we want to talk about conserving land, and we want to talk about having heavy-duty landscaping, which we really can't do if somebody wants to put another row of parking in for something that's commercial. And I do keep my eye on Costco, and I note that the line of parking spots nearest to Payne Road very seldom has anything in there. And in the winter, it only has snow. And in the winter, it only has snow. And I do recall some of that discussion. So I, again, I'm going to possibly be tying up some more things as we go along. Thank you.
Well, your efforts are appreciated, Rachel, and don't give up the torch yet. Rod, Jen, go ahead. I'm going to let Jen go first.
Thanks. I just wanted to thank staff for bringing our attention to this law change and working so quickly to revise our local ordinance language around it. I do, as others have said, I do think that this is a great way to help prevent some, you know, perhaps unnecessary impervious area for reasons that Rick and Rachel just mentioned. And as it's likely intended to help improve and make a little bit more efficient some of our residential projects. And you, I think, Rick, it was you that used the same term that I was thinking of, which was, you know, the falling back on the burden of proof to the applicants that come to us. So instead of requiring a higher level of parking, I just think this is a great way to kind of be the minimum and, or the maximum in maybe a future case. And then really rely on individual projects if they really feel like they need something above and beyond that. One question that I have in reading through this has to do with our access to transit. And I noticed that there was language including allowances for agreements to off-street parking, but I'm wondering if we could also include some sort of agreement that if a particular project was within probably the same quarter mile, would be my guess, of an accessible transit stop or a transit stop that could be made accessible, that that could suffice and fulfill a part or all of the parking requirement as well.
Thanks, Jen, that's an interesting point. And maybe, again, it goes back to, could you get involved in the rulemaking process if it hasn't happened?
So, so this particular one, this is already in effect and I don't think they would have anything for rulemaking about adding a transit stop, but it could be something that we could look at in a future ordinance amendment. I will tell you all that this is the first of probably 455 ordinance changes that will come before you.
Because of the, yeah, yeah.
Because of the new laws and LD 1829 in particular, and this is probably the easiest one that we are going to talk about, I think.
How easy was this?
I think Jen's concern about transit and Rachel's concern about traffic and Angela's concern about LID and impervious area and lot size and density and all of those things are going to be starting to come before you on a pretty regular rolling basis, so.
Appreciate the position you're in and good luck with that.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Roger?
All right, just a quick question. So if a developer comes before us and they want, they want to build an apartment complex or whatever, and they want to do two parking spaces per unit, they would need, they would need a way, is that correct?
No.
No.
If, if a developer comes before you and say they have 20 units, right now our parking ordinance would require 30 spaces, but now our ordinance will require 20 spaces. If they want to do 40, to Rachel's point, we don't have a maximum right now. They can, as long as they meet all of our other requirements.
And they've demonstrated to us, and we have discretion on that, right?
Right.
Whether they get 30 or they get 40. They have to prove that they need 40 versus what our ordinance said would be your maximum is 30.
There's no, there's no maximum. We don't have a maximum right now. We have minimum parking standards. So when you come in and you do those 30 units, the new state law requires we can only require one space per unit. So that's 30 spaces you'd be required to build. And if they came to us and said, we want to actually do 40 spaces, and as long as they are meeting all of the other requirements, and they can do that on that lot, maybe it's a little bit bigger than normal and they meet all of our landscaping and they meet all of the impervious limitations, then there really is no, to Rachel's point, there's really nothing that you walk and say no to. But if we put in the maximums in place, then you could, or if you put some sort of other threshold protections. But to Angela's point, the low-impact development ordinance should also address our impervious area and some other things. So we're going to tackle it all, but this is just decreasing the amount of parking that we can require, the minimum.
Well, this is in, is complying with the law.
Right, and I want you all to also understand that this also applies to single families. So a single-family development, you typically are not going to have this problem, but they're only required to put one, for a four-bedroom home, they're only required to put one parking space. LD 1829 says that if you have water and sewer in a growth area, the maximum minimum lot size we can require is 5,000 square feet. And on that 5,000 square feet, we can have four homes, four units. So whatever you can get on those four units, it could be four single-family homes in a weird way or a quadplex, only four parking spaces are required. So that is what the law has done.
Has this, has this law been challenged at all? Are you aware of any, any?
I'm not aware of this one. There's a lot of discussion for 1829. 1829 doesn't go into effect until July 1 and it's in rulemaking, excuse me, with official rulemaking to be finalized by January. And that one has a lot further-reaching impacts.
The reason, reason I'm bringing these all up, these questions is because during our discussions about the Downs, I think I'm not the only one, it's always been concerned, is there going to be enough parking for the residents? You know, we've even talked about a parking garage and things like that because we are concerned. And so, I don't know.
Well, it puts a little more onus on the developer to say, is he going to be able to occupy those buildings with what they're proposing as residential parking for their occupants? If they, if an occupant has two cars and they only have one spot, they may not move there. That's an unintended consequence, but it could happen.
It also could, I mean, lead to invention. I mean, I think that's the, some of the point is this level of constriction at a state level makes it so we don't have to make those decisions for our community and that level of, you know, and I would just say, I would love Angela to participate any way possible with the long-range planning process. I would love to see maximum parking for both commercial and residential in Scarborough. I think there is an element of, if you build the parking, the parking, the cars will come. And, and we have certainly seen that in southern Maine. And I think this is an opportunity to think about, and I really enjoyed Jennifer's suggestion. I think that, that level of, you know, how we're building and using this opportunity both to make 1829 and its associated bills better for rulemaking, and also to say, this is an opportunity to have a conversation about what we want the community to look like and how many, how many cars do you really need in, and how many parking spaces do you really need? And I live down the road from Costco and it is, I would say that the, most of the rows are empty for most of the week. And that is something I drive by every day.
Thanks. Anyone else? Go, go ahead, Tyler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just sort of mechanically looking at this, I'm curious if a developer was relying on the parking agreement for off-site satisfaction of the parking requirements. Is there a mechanism to make sure that the off-site facility isn't double, triple-promising their available parking to multiple developers?
Yes, we would have to review that parking agreement and the parking demand model to show that they have adequate space for them, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That's a good point, thanks. Anyone else? At this point, Autumn, are you okay with moving forward? I, I guess this is going to go back to town council.
It goes to town council Wednesday for a public hearing and site reading.
Okay, very good. Thank you all. We'll move forward then with item 4.02, which is a consent item. Terradon Consultants LLC, on behalf of Tom and Kelly Roth, has requested final subdivision review of the Joni's Way subdivision. I'm sorry, I doubled this. Located at 12 Joni's Way, assessors map R5, lot 27A. Yes, Helen, you're going to address this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as you mentioned, this is a consent item for a final subdivision proposal. This was moved forward from the October meeting as a consent item pending receipt of a DOT permit, which has since been received. For a lot residential subdivision, we'll require three rate-of-growth permits from the Area 1 allocation and the applicant is available for questions.
Thank you, Helen, and we'll allow the applicant, if they want to give us any updates on what's going on. Congratulations on getting your permit.
Thank you, yeah, so they went back out and they checked and they got the adequate site distance and will get the permit. And I think last time we had shown that easement there, so it's on the plans for subdivision. Nothing else new on our end.
Thank you. This item is available for public comment. Anyone wishing, please step up to the podium and we'll double-check online. Nothing. Closing public comment, and as I said, this is a consent item. We've seen it. We held it as a consent item pending that permit, but I open it up to my colleagues. Jen, you okay? Thumbs up, okay, cool. Then I move to approve the final subdivision plan of Joni's Way subdivision proposed by Tom and Kelly Roth. The project is depicted in plan set prepared by Terranine Consultants dated 9/19/2025. Findings, the proposal is for a four-lot subdivision containing a single, an existing single-family home and three residential lots located on a 6.81 acre lot off of Joni's Way, map R5, lot 27. The board finds that the project meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, zoning ordinance with the conditions below. Conditions, number one, prior to the release of the subdivision plan for recording, the applicant shall address traffic comments in the memo dated 10/7/2025. B, address engineering comments in the memo dated 10/7/25. C, provide a tree trimming easement to ensure site distance can be met now and in the future. D, provide a performance guaranteed required by Section 9 of the Town of Scarborough subdivision ordinance. This shall be reviewed by the town engineer. And E, coordinate street names and addressing with the E911 addressing officer. This shall be reviewed by the planning department. Condition two, prior to the start of construction, a pre-construction meeting is required. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer and their site contractor, and is to be coordinated through the planning department. The below must be addressed prior to scheduling the pre-construction meeting. A, the sub, the approved subdivision shall be recorded at the Cumberland County Register of Deeds. B, the applicant shall execute and record a stormwater maintenance agreement with the town. The form of the stormwater maintenance agreement is located in Appendix 1 of the Town of Scarborough's Chapter 419 Post-Construction Stormwater Infrastructure Management Ordinance. C, pay the Chapter 19 Stormwater Maintenance Agreement and Reporting Fee, a total of $750. And D, provide a full, a final full set plan set to the planning department, including all civil plans and drawing files. And E, payment of all review fees and ordinances. This shall be reviewed by the planning department. And condition three, prior to the issuance of the first building permit, the application, the applicant shall pay the traffic impact fees, which total $4,852.84. This shall be reviewed by the planning department. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rachel. Doreen, would you take the role?
Rick Minkin?
Yes.
Rachel Henderson?
Yes.
James Hebert?
Yes.
Jabeelie?
Yes.
And Jennifer Ladd?
Yes.
All right, thank you all for that and thanks for your effort and working with the planning department. Moving forward, we're at 4.03. Goral Palmer, on behalf of Magenta LLC, has requested a master plan amendment review for the Haggis Park Development Phase 2, which includes the construction for up to six freestanding buildings located at 40 Haggis Parkway, assessors map 50, lot 35. And Helen, you want to just give us an update?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. So as you mentioned, this is a master plan amendment proposal. This board has seen it recently before. It's for mixed office and manufacturing uses of the property in the Haggis Parkway zoning district. And just to give a little bit of background, the master plan was initially approved in February 2019 and then came before the board or was reviewed as a sketch plan this July, but it was asked of the applicant that they revise the master plan so it fits what they're proposing a bit better. So this came before the board initially as a master plan review, or a master plan amendment review in October and it's back for discussion. The applicant is here, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Helen. And for the applicant.
Evening to the board. Steve Bushy, Goral Palmer Consulting Engineers. We've been here a couple of times now for this amended master plan. What you see up on the screen shows to the north end, an existing building, 10,000 square feet. Sid Harvey is the current tenant and that property has actually been divided off of what was an original little over six-acre parcel. So we now have Phase 2 and the master plan is depicting five more additional buildings. The original master plan had a total of three buildings on it. And over the course of time, I think market conditions have shown that there's demand and interest and so forth. And that sort of building, Sid Harvey, is certainly indicative of the demand out there for the Haggis Parkway and interest and so forth. So the applicant, Magenta, who retained a little over four acres, has decided to go ahead with five buildings now as this master plan. Now, we're going to have to come back before you for site plan and potential subdivision approval, but in this process, per the board's request to amend the, the master plan, we've come up with this current plan before you. Some of the things that we talked about in October that the board and staff wanted to see was some additional information, including building summaries, parking summaries, which are now in those tables up on the plan. And then the fire department wanted to see some turning movements for fire apparatus and so forth. We did a few subtle changes to the plan because we have a single entrance on Haggis Parkway. And in fact, I think as I had mentioned before, the existing driveway that serves the Sid Harvey building would be closed and we would be relocating a driveway more centrally to this piece of property. And that whole process was something that had been taken up back in that 2019, 2020 timeframe because as you can imagine, the Downs was really just beginning to get going there. And so there was quite a few back and forth between the Downs development team, city staff or town staff in the planning department and the Magenta developer about driveway positioning and locationing and so forth. So we're now comfortable with where this proposed new driveway would be positioned and DOT has indicated that they would be as well. So we'll be filing for a new driveway opening permit with them. As far as the fire department here locally, there was a concern expressed about access as a single driveway into this piece of property. And what we came up with was that we would widen the driveway effectively to kind of a two-lane with a mountable island in the middle, very much similar, I'll say, to the Foley's driveway, Foley's Fitness driveway, just a little bit further south, pretty much the same sort of thing, perhaps even a little bit larger footprint and parking and more vehicles going in and out. But that has been, I guess, considered acceptable by the fire department. And in fact, all of our buildings will be sprinkled buildings and the fire department had asked about having fire hydrants within 100 feet of each of the buildings and their fire department connections. So here we have a fair amount of frontage on Haggis Parkway. We're going to have four fire hydrants, private fire hydrants in front, making sure that we can meet and satisfy the fire department's request to have a hydrant that close to all of the buildings. So feeling comfortable with all of that. We also satisfied you've had this discussion now about the parking and satisfying the parking requirements relative to each of the uses within the buildings. We've. Within the buildings, we've outlined that there'd be a portion of each building that would be industrial with a little lower percentage or a lower ratio for parking, and then some office space. That's likely to be the way it works. Interestingly enough, the same sort of thing was applied for the Sid Harvey building, and that building probably overparked, at least for the amount of times that I've been by there. If they have 15 or 18 parking spaces, there's typically no more than five or six vehicles that are over there. But it does satisfy the town code, so. All sorts of capacity relative to the utilities, good water, good sewer in front. In fact, we're going to be tying into the sewer line that was installed on Haggis Parkway oh so long ago that, in fact, that piece of sewer has never been used. So 25 years later, it's finally going to see some water flowing to it if we're successful in moving ahead with the project. So that's kind of where we stand. We think we've captured everything. I know that there were still a few comments that I think are really more related to site plan and subdivision. So when we make that submission, most likely within the next month. I think the next submission deadline is December. So hopefully, we'd be back here before you folks with the site plan subdivision, in which we could get into a lot more greater detail in January, hopefully. So hoping tonight that you folks will look favorably upon where we stand with the amended master plan and go from there.
Thanks, Steve. This item is available for public comment. I don't see much of an audience, but I want to check online. All right, so we're closed public comment, and appreciate the update, Steve. And from my standpoint, yeah, just remember, we will see this again in site plan review and keeping my mind that this is focused on a master plan. And it was us that requested the applicant to come back to us with this revised master plan. I'm comfortable myself with the new entrance to this. I'm satisfied with the overall layout, although I look forward to the site plan and elevations and actual what the proposed usage might end up being, if you have some folks already engaged with you. But I think you dotted the i's and crossed the t's, as far as I'm concerned. So I'm going to open this up to my colleagues and have them provide any additional factors that I may have missed, and I see Rachel's hand up, so fire away.
Yes. I had made an notation around the driveway that was going to be eliminated in terms of fire safety. Had there been any discussion of keeping that open but gated so that the fire engines would have either a second exit or entrance?
Feel free to exchange the dialogue here. Thank you.
I think that's a great suggestion, had not been formally asked or talked about with the fire department, but I would certainly make light of that. I think it's a good suggestion. Perhaps a gate with a Knox box sort of thing, in that they felt that that would be worthy. And it sounds as though, I guess I would query the board if there is a majority on the board that think that that's a good idea, we would certainly pursue it.
I certainly think the fire department should be asked if that would be helpful for them.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Anyone else? Go ahead, James.
I would mimic that comment. I'm just thinking from the standpoint of if there was an emergency, the single entrance could be congested with folks trying to evacuate the area or you're trying to have emergency personnel enter the area. So I think having it locked with a Knox box would keep regular folks from using it and keep it precluded for just the emergency personnel. So I would support that. I wish there was a way we could facilitate circulation behind the proposed buildings, but I understand due to the narrowness of the lot that that's really not feasible in this case. That's all I have.
Thanks, James. Anyone else? Jen?
I just have a question. Maybe it's more for staff or the applicant or a combination thereof. There's a comment about monitoring this site for future. So I think it said at full buildout or approaching full buildout, monitoring for the need for a potential left turn lane. And I was just curious if we should be in, so I just have some question, a couple more questions around that requirement, if that's what we're going to do, and if that would be something that we should be discussing at this point or for a future site plan submission. I can't remember.
Thanks, Jen, but it's a good point. And maybe can you shed some information on what the potential future of this might look like, and would that be something to consider?
I can, because we talked about that internally a little bit and have had the traffic team in our office give us some information. They had a look at the site lines and so forth. So one of the other items since that had been raised by BNL about that left turn queue or left turn need, and would we meet that warrant, I guess if you want to call it that. Thus far, based on the land uses that we're projecting on the master plan with industrial and little mix of office, I've been told we still wouldn't trigger a left-hand turn warrant for a left-hand turn lane. Now, it's just interesting in that there is a left-hand turn lane that was installed as part of the Downs piece for the Market Street intersection, and they did that. And I suppose maybe it was because it's going to be, it was going to be a signalized intersection ultimately at Market Street. But right now, for our uses, we wouldn't trigger that. Now, that said, obviously, when we come through site plan, it may very well be that you folks may want to consider conditions, not knowing. I don't suspect that all five new buildings will be occupied at the same time and all constructed at the same time. And perhaps it'd be some sort of condition that might say to the applicant that over time, you get to Building 3, you get to Building 4, we're going to want to see you come back before you pull a building permit with some traffic evidence as to what you're actually producing for traffic counts. That might trigger that. It could be something to think about, at least when we go through site plan.
That seems fair, and we probably would be looking at that, so stay tuned. But good point, Jen. Anything else?
That's all I have. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I certainly don't want to stand in the way if this is, I think, satisfying the safety concerns of the other board members. I do just have lingering concerns and would love for you to just speak more about the market forces that you identified that led to five buildings as opposed to three, and I guess five single-story buildings, meeting the need is the sense that each of these future tenants requires their own standalone building to, kind of for this to be marketable. And I'm just, I keep looking at the thing and thinking, oh, that's really going to be tight for emergency vehicles. I like the notion of the second entrance. I don't usually like the notion of the second entrance, but I think from a safety point of view, it's good. So I just would love to know more about, as you think about this change, why five standalone buildings as opposed to some other configuration on the property?
Basically, when we got to this summer, the applicant approached us and said, gosh, we probably ought to really be looking at a little bit more intense use here because of the various discussions he has with tenants. And I can speak to, having done a number of different projects, not only in Scarborough here and the industrial park and other locations, but that demand for that roughly five, that's probably a little on the low end, but eight to 12,000, even 15,000 square foot standalone buildings for tenants is very, very strong. Now, I've also done additional buildings even here in Scarborough, where we've done one larger building and then just had little condo units within each of those spaces, and maybe put four or five that might be 2,500 square feet to 3,000 square feet or so forth. But you end up, Sid Harvey's really the perfect example of that building, when it was first proposed and approved, was supposed to be two units, two 5,000 square foot units. Sid Harvey came in and said, no, we want the whole thing because we're mostly warehousing with rack storage and, you know, a little sales area, and that's basically it. That's the sort of demand that's out there. And I think the prospect for the ability to do a subdivision here as well. The site's set up reasonably well, and we've checked all the zoning pieces. So what you're going to see from us relative to site plan will also include a subdivision component to it because we may want to have the ability to subdivide the lots. There'll be some cross-access easements for utilities and access and so forth. But it all works out fairly straightforward because you've got so much frontage. We don't have a lot of depth, but we have a lot of frontage, which kind of lends itself to being able to create the lots and then have individual buildings. So that's mostly the driver for it.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Go ahead, Tyler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question on the kind of design for five buildings there. The initial design provided for a loading bays to be accessible, and it looks like there's no space for that now. Is that kind of the contemplation for the function of these buildings is not? It looks like there may be some overhead doors or garage doors in the back, but.
Exactly. Overhead doors for smaller box-type trucks that can maneuver in those spaces that we now have on the master plan, as opposed to Sid Harvey did stand out because they do have a loading dock and they do have large trucks that do deliver there. But by and large, not as much demand, and I think the applicant was kind of thinking, eh, having built that building, kind of learned some lessons, and the loading dock requires digging down a little bit, and there's some cost to that. And he said, I think we can get away with having plenty of tenant interest with those who just need an overhead door and great access so they can drive up, like I say, a box truck. So those are the sorts of tenants and lease interests that are out there.
And if there's two box trucks serving adjacent buildings at the same time, is there space for two to be loading at the same time? Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll certainly want to see that at the site plan.
Sure.
Yeah. Thanks, Tyler. Anyone else? All said, yeah, I think we've reviewed this and appreciate the level of work that you put in at our request on an amended master plan. So I do have a motion. I do move to approve the project titled 40 Haggis Parkway Master Plan Amendment proposed by Magenta LLC. The project is depicted in application materials provided, prepared by Goro Palmer dated 10/27/25. Findings: The proposal amends the existing 40 Haggis Parkway master plan by expanding the previously approved master plan to include the southerly end of the site with the revised project including up to six freestanding buildings along with the prerequisite parking facilities, utilities, and stormwater management infrastructure and a relocated driveway. The board finds this amendment meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance and the site plan review ordinance with the conditions below. Condition one, address staff comments in the memo dated 11/17/25 with future site plan submissions. And number two, address traffic comments in the memo dated 11/17/25 with future site plan submissions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rachel. Doreen, would you take the role?
Rick Minkin?
Yes.
Rachel Henderson?
Yes.
James Hebert?
Yes.
Roger Beale?
Yes.
And Jennifer Ladd?
Yes.
All right, Steve. You're on your way. We'll see you again.
Thank you so much.
Don't rush all the site plans all in one month. It is December next month. All right, we're moving on to item 4.03, Advisory Opinion by the Zoning Board of Appeals as part of a miscellaneous appeal by PBC Holdings LLC, 92 Broad Turn Road, Assessors Map, R45, Lot 3. Helen, do you want to give us a review of this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So as you mentioned, this is a miscellaneous appeal. The appellant is seeking an advisory opinion from the planning board before going to the zoning board of appeals. Next, the advisory opinion is a required piece of the process for miscellaneous appeals, which is why they're before the board today. This is a miscellaneous appeal for 92 Broad Turn Road, and it's an appeal to enlarge and expand a previously approved non-conforming use, landscape and property maintenance, to apply to the entire site. And I'll give a little more background on that in a moment. This is in the RF District, where the previous use and the currently approved non-conforming use are non-conforming in the RF District. So the previous appeal was granted by the zoning board in March of 2022, and it allowed an existing non-conforming use, which was woodworking and carpentry manufacturer, to convert to a full-service landscape and property maintenance use, which is also non-conforming, as I mentioned. But this previous approval only covered the conversion of that use. So approval for this appeal is needed for the enlargement and expansion of the use, which would then cover all future expansion on the property. So in this case, covering the entire site rather than the specific location of the previously non-conforming use. The appellant has provided a preliminary plan, just for your reference, to show the use of the site. But I would take a moment here also to just note that approval, if this is approved by the zoning board, doesn't preclude the applicant from going through the site plan review process at a later date. So just in case there's any confusion seeing a plan up here. And we've also provided the review requirements for the planning board's reference. Section 3 of the ordinance covers non-conformance, which includes the enlargement and expansion of the use, as I mentioned. And then Section 5C covers the Board of Appeals procedure. And I just wanted to highlight here that part of that includes the planning board shall consider the criteria of Section 3 and formulate its recommendation. And that Section 3 is referring to non-conformance and the sort of standards that should be referenced in these types of reviews. And we've also provided the special exception standards, excuse me, which are referred to in Section 3. So there's plenty of ordinance backing this up, but just wanted to provide the full background. And in terms of timeline, this would be going before the Zoning Board of Appeals in December. So the advisory opinion is the first step, and then zoning board is next. And we're anticipating site plan submittal and review in January. So as I mentioned, still subject to the site plan review process. And I believe the appellant is available if you have, no? Okay.
Thanks, Helen. And for the applicant?
I don't believe the applicant is.
Online?
In attendance.
Do not see him in attendance.
All right, well, then we'll open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to make a comment, please step up. Anybody online?
No.
Nobody? Okay. So here we are, folks, with a request for some advisory opinion on this piece of parcel that is currently being used, I believe, for landscape business, where it was primarily used before as carpentry and cabinetry. I know I drive by this every day because I live off the Broad Turn Road. I will say, if the applicant views the video here, I much appreciate the efforts that have been done on this lot in terms of cleaning it up to a pretty good degree. There was a lot of vegetation that was way overgrown. There's been fencing put up, isolating a residential component. And all in all, it looks like a landscaping business. That said, I think what we're here now is just to provide any sort of information that would be helpful for the appeals board to consider whether they want to approve this continued non-conforming use, the applicability of adding to the site, knowing full well that if they should go down that route, we're going to see it again as a site plan. I myself, they're doing a good job of maintaining the property today. I think that I would be. I think that I would be willing to entertain any future development of this lot to meet the needs of yet agreed. It's a non-conforming business in a RF district, but nevertheless, it, it falls within the, the guidelines that we have established here in the town. So I, I'm fairly comfortable in allowing, you know, the board of appeals to take a look at this. And, and I don't really have much to offer, other than the fact that going through the site plan review will allow us and the abutters to check in with us and have the ability to address any issues that might come up based on the current performance of the business. So, James, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And before we go further, I just wanted to inform the members of the board that my company did work for this applicant in preparing their site plan a couple of years ago. I wasn't involved in this project at all. It was a civil project, and I'm an electrical engineer. That being said, I feel like I can offer an objective opinion on this, as I wasn't aware and involved in the project. However, per the MMA Conflict of Interest recommendations, I wanted to bring up for the board members. If anybody has an objection to me being here as far as contributing to the conversation, I'm more than happy to sit in the audience and accuse myself from the discussion.
I don't have any objections.
No objection?
Anybody else? Okay, so you can stay put. He's looking at you. I think you're, you're all set, James. And do you want to add to any flavor to the conversation here?
I guess I, I was on the zoning board of appeals when this came up, but it was one of the few times that I was absent from that meeting. So my, my stance coming from the zoning board experience is that if you're having, if you have a non-conforming use that has been there for a long period of time, and you have somebody else who does want to continue that non-conforming use, but improve the area. Because I know I also drive through this area, where you and I both live out in that direction. Traffic and speed is a real concern on that corner of the Broad Turn Road. And the alternative option is that become, if it ever to become a subdivision or another, like densely residential area, you're just adding more traffic into a curve that's already pretty dangerous for people who are speeding through there. So if this is a continued use for something that is that can improve the space, as we said, taking down some of the overgrowth, make, making physical and improvements to the space, I think that's, that's worthy of a recommendation.
Thanks, James. Anyone else? Rachel?
Yeah, I, I'm a little confused or worried, you know, take your choice there. Because I don't, I don't feel as though I've got enough information to, sufficient information to actually make a decision or to advise the zoning board, the ZBA. According to the review requirements, the impact and effect of the use change will not be substantially different from, got that, or greater than the impact of the non-conforming use before change. So is the proposal to make all of this non-conforming, does that include the use of the property woodworking facility and a snack and beverage distribution company? In other words, what, what are we approving? Are, are they going to add to the snack and beverage distribution company? They're going to add to the woodworking facility? What are they? In order to make an informed judgment, I need to know what they were going to do. Because part of the thing we're supposed to review is to ensure that it's not substantially different from or greater than the impact of the non-conforming use before the change. And I have no way of judging that.
I hear that, but my understanding was that we're, we're looking at this as a landscape business, and it's looking to maybe expand that?
Right, so this one is a little bit unique. They, in twenty twenty-two, they came before the board of appeals, and they converted the woodworking cabinetry business, which was a non-conforming use, into another non-conforming use, being the landscape contractor. And at that time, the applicant thought that that was all of the steps. But the way that was done, it only included the conversion and those existing buildings on site. After that, the applicant met with staff and wanted to remove a building and replace it in the same footprint. But they also wanted to do some additional work on the site and a new building. And in conversations with our town attorney, realized that the original board of appeals application for the special exception did not include the expansion or enlargement of the non-conforming use. And then as a technicality, they would have to come back through this process. And so this is to allow them to expand the non-conforming use and to enlarge it on the site. And then it'll go through board of appeals in a few weeks. And if they approve it for the special exception standards, it would come back for, to you all as a site plan submittal, and you would see the full plan for the entirety of the site. Hopefully that helps a little bit. It's like.
No, because I don't see that in the application. In other words, I, I understand your description, but I, the application is not clear around that.
I, I say, as I said, the concern I have is I don't think I have enough in the application to make, make an informed judgment. I hear what you're saying. I, I, if I saw that in the application, I think I would be able to say, yep, good idea. But, but it's not there.
All right. Anybody else? Go ahead, Tyler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have actually some similar hesitations to Rachel insofar as the, there's a number of factors or standards to be considered when making an advisory opinion as to a non-conforming use. You know, to ensure that it's not creating any unsanitary or unhealthy conditions, unsafe traffic conditions, so on and so forth. And that may be the case in that if there's an expansion of kind of the existing facilities there, it does not violate any of the standards, but it is difficult to make that determination without knowing what the plan is for this property. So I think some additional information would be helpful to know exactly what the intention is rather, before kind of issuing kind of, you know, a recommended approval of the non-conforming use for the, for the rest of the parcel. And sort of dovetailing with that, one of the materials did mention that there are some materials on site, fertilizers, so on and so forth, which I could see, you know, running afoul of some of these standards, if not handled or stored appropriately. So to the extent that, you know, informs the, the recommendation we put before the zoning board of appeals, that's just some additional information I'd be keen to, to learn. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Tyler. Just for some clarity, on page six, under subcategory or paragraph A, it appears to me that they're seeking special exemption to a non-conforming use variance already in place at ninety-two Broad Turn in order to operate a green care landscape management, a full-service landscape and property management company currently located in South Portland. Current use of the property includes a woodworking facility and snack bar and beverage distribution company. At this time, they're advising that a, a boundary survey is not required. But to me, it seems like what they're asking for the appeal is, is to continue to use and operate this parcel as a landscape management company. I don't know if that brings any clarity to.
So what they did, what the applicant did with, is he included the original application, and this is the original application for his miscellaneous appeal that was brought before you all for an advisory opinion, and then ultimately approved in twenty twenty-two. And the, what he's done on the new application, and I wish that he was here, I'm not really sure why he's not here tonight, is that he wants to be able to apply the non-conforming use site-wide so that he can do what was shown on the site plan in your packet. And that includes expanding some of the structures and adding some accessory buildings and cleaning up and adding official parking. So that's what he's requesting. And all of those changes would have to come back for an official site.
Site plan review.
Correct.
Well, before I go any further, I want to see if my colleagues have any additional input to this. Because I'm kind of inclined to say maybe we, unfortunately, it might not be able to make the agenda item on the next PBA. Or what do you call it, the CBA or? And maybe come and provide some sort of clarity of what the intent down the road is with this.
I would really respectfully request that because of the timing and the way these meetings work, you all having to do this advisory opinion, I have to have this. The next board of appeals meeting is December tenth. And so we would be on a December fifteenth planning board meeting for a January twelfth or so board of appeals meeting. I fear that you're not going to get any more information than what I have already provided in the packet. I guess it's mine.
Yeah.
What I would offer.
But I'm, I'm hearing from my colleagues that they're not a hundred percent comfortable. And I'm just wondering, you know, would, would delaying any action on this would allow the appellant to come and, and talk and answer questions that we might have? Go ahead, Rachel.
Yeah, I, I don't hear any, any real negatives. I hear some concerns and questions for information. I would think, and James can tell me I'm absolutely wrong, I would think that the ZBA would take a hard look at what we say, which is not that, don't do this, but we need more information. The ZBA could decide it had enough information. And in the absence of our saying, don't do it, the ZBA could make its own informed decision.
I, and I respect that, and thank you for, for doing that. Because I, I'm myself comfortable with, with saying to, to staff here that I think this could go before the zoning board of appeals. And, and then we would then see it again and have the ability to tweak things if needed. Go ahead.
William. Rachel, I really appreciated that. I think I would, I, I've viewed similarly as someone who has served on a ZBA in the past as well. I, I think the things that, when I look at this and I look at, at the, what information is, is in the ZBA findings in particular, I, I would personally bet, I mean, again, I, I would, I would encourage them to do a deeper dive, in particular, on finding D adverse effect on water supplies, which I don't believe is adequately addressed in the finding. And I think that the description of an operations as being similar to a commercial farm, which is a conforming use in RF, given the winter snow care business that we run is, gives me significant pause as someone that lives next to a non-conforming use in an RF zone. And I think the, the questions I have around access to, to sand, lights, I mean, just, I suppose, general compliance with a good neighbor ordinance. But, but I think in particular, those six trucks, in that scenario, there's a winter storm, are the six trucks that are stored off-site, coming back to the facility at two in the morning to grab sand to go out and do runs. And I think that there is, I think the, the landscaping business, as narrowly defined as a, like landscaping business that runs from, to March to November, say, is, is very akin to a commercial farming operation consistent with an RF zone. The plowing operations and a winter snow care removal business with a salt shed hoop removals, like that whole situation, it doesn't sound as much like a conforming use, and sounds like a considerable expansion of what is beyond a woodworking business with a snack. I appreciate that it looks better than it did before, and I really want to give them credit for that, so.
If I can just add, they are already doing the snow removal business. They already have been operating with that since twenty twenty-two.
I think my question is if, if the building that would be required to expand is to the end of, I think that's where I was a little confused, was if that would expand their snow removal business, then that would be an expansion of the operations and the non-conforming use.
Okay.
Sorry if that doesn't make sense. I think you're picking up what I'm putting down. Yeah.
Tyler?
Mr. Chair, maybe a question for you or for Autumn. The function of an advisory opinion, is it something that can, you know, indicate our general sentiment of openness but needing more information? Or is it supposed to be sort of a cut and dry, you know, this is our position, approval, not approval? What is sort of?
Autumn, address that, because I'm sure she's more eloquent.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but you all are supposed to give a recommendation one way or the other, that they are not supposed to act against correctly, is the way the ordinance is written?
I'd have to refer more closely to the ordinance, but I believe.
I believe that that is the way it's actually written, that you all provide an opinion and that they have to review that strongly.
All right, so James, I'll just, from the zoning board perspective, the zoning board doesn't always necessarily have to agree with a recommendation or an advisory opinion from the planning board. I know that the zoning board dives a lot deeper into these details as far as making sure that the applicant provides evidence of there's no additional or no sedimentation or erosion or adverse effect on water supplies. They go through this, that list of criteria that the applicant has to then provide as far as not creating unsafe traffic conditions, not creating unsafe public safety conditions there, be compatible with the existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to their size, visual impact, intensity of use. We can advise the ZBA to also look deeper into these issues where if time of day, you know, we, we do not want them to be operating at two AM to have a truck going and start loading up to head out in the middle of the, middle of the night during the weekday. Those items we can give as recommendations for topics, topics of discussion for the ZBA to then ask the appellant, the applicant at that point to delve deeper and provide evidence that they won't be impacting the greater neighborhood in that regard. The ZBA will, will go into greater detail of, of all of these questions, mostly with regard to the environmental implications, because that's always a huge one that's impactful, especially for a non-conforming use. And then, as, as Autumn pointed out, it does have to come back to us again afterwards. So if we don't like what the ZBA has done, and they come back to us, we can then say, okay, but we can still impose more restrictions on what your operating can be, or you can't have this here.
Now, we can impose the, the regular site plan review.
Right, so there's almost a, this is a, like, multiple filters that this will go through before it comes back to us, before they can just go ahead and do what they want with it.
I can read you the specific language now. Before making a decision on any miscellaneous appeal from, from restrictions on non-conforming uses, the zoning board shall refer said appeal to the planning board for an advisory opinion. The zoning board shall not act contrary to the planning board recommendation unless it makes specific findings of fact to justify its decision. So that is what I was trying to say. I was close.
Yeah, you were there. You were there. I want to just double check with Jen. Jen, any feedback from your side?
Oh, no, just general, general agreement that some additional information I think would be helpful.
Okay, thanks. So I think as it stands, and correct me if I'm wrong, folks, I think we, 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 we should allow the zoning board of appeals to, to hear, hear this and, and go through their review criteria, just like we do with our plant, site plan, and make some det- And make some determinations on, on what the applicant needs to do. And then we get the final cut at the cake here. And uh, all the requirements that we impose on all the other applicants with site plan. Will now fall within our jurisdiction and we can take it from there. But I think I'm comfortable in allowing this to proceed with a, an appeal, the, the appeal process. And see what the zoning board imposes on the applicant. Rachel?
Yeah, I, I guess I would be in favor of allowing this to be, to proceed as long as our. Opinion includes uh the caveat that uh we recommend that the ZBA. Uh, delve deeper into or the, that these were the concerns that we had.
We had.
And uh, we would assume that they would delve deeper into it, something like that. I don't wanna tell the ZBA what to do. But I, I do think we should make sure they understand. That there's stuff that we, we need to see.
Yeah, we, I, I guess I'll look to Autumn and, and Doreen. Would you be able to? Uh, condense all of these comments that we've had in the discussion we had into a, a narrative that could be passed on to the ZBA. As they make their uh judgment.
Yes.
Okay.
About this, so the planning board recommends that the ZBA hears the requests with further consideration for informations. Addition, oh, sorry, let's start over. The planning board recommends the ZBA hear the requests with consideration for additional information. Specifically surrounding the original findings in section D. And pertaining, and additional information pertaining to snow operations.
Anybody have any additional? Any concerns with that? Jen, you okay? Thumped up? Thumbs down? All right, go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm like trying to think in real time and that's sometimes hard for my brain. I think the question that I have is, and I'm looking at the plans again, is. Making sure that the expansion. Is a greater level, I can do this. A greater level of finding as to the nature of the expanded, expansion and how it relates to.
Winter operation?
Winter operation in particular. Um.
Yep.
And I don't think it does, but I don't have any evidence to give me what I need to make that determination.
Yep, and I, I, I know for a fact that they're currently doing winter operations.
Yeah, and I think I'm like.
But I, I think some slarty into that and, and what does this sand and, and the traffic impacts that it has. Uh, I think they need to share that with us.
Okay.
All right, you all set, Autumn?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, that's great working through that. Um, I think we're down to, what, one more? Yes, uh, let me make sure I'm. Yep, all right, we're on subject four point oh five Herbert Construction. On behalf of Firehouse Venture LLC is requesting a site plan amendment review for parket. Parking entrance modifications and the addition of a landscape park. Area at two forty-six US Route One Assessor's Map U forty-three Lot fifty-six. And Helen, you wanna take us through this one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so this is an amended site plan application, uh, proposal for two forty-six US Route One. Which is the Firehouse Village areas where the Rosemont and the Harborfish Market are. Um, and the proposal includes the parking entrance modifications and the landscape park day, landscaped park area that you mentioned. This is in the TVC zoning district. And just to provide a bit of background, the initial site plan approval um was in April of two thousand and twenty-one. And the site plan was amended um at the administrative level in September of two thousand and twenty-two. And I just wanted to flag um one item that is brought up in this proposal as well. The entrance only access from Fairfield Road um was proposed in two thousand and twenty-one. Um, during that review cycle because the Fairfield intersection with US Route One um had a history of vehicle crashes. Um, and we've had positive feedback on this proposal from public safety as it relates to um that kind of historical issue with the site and with that intersection. Um, and the applicant is available for any discussion questions.
Thanks, Helen. And for the applicant.
Yeah, so uh, thank you for uh seeing us today. Um, as Helen mentioned, we're proposing a modification to the entry exit into the parking lot at.
Could I just get your name for the record?
Simon Hebert, uh, with Firehouse Ventures and Hebert Construction. Um, so right now it's a two-way and uh that proposes some site difficulties. We're trying to maintain the same overall vertical curb cut, but changing it into a one-way and in talking with planning. Um, we have agreed to also, instead of doing the pylons as proposed in our plan. Doing angled um three-inch granite curbing with uh concrete back. So that way, you know, with that along with signage still allows for, you know, forgiveness on vehicles trying to make the turn in. Um, emergency vehicles um have looked at this and, and look at that favorably um compared to the existing plan. Um, and by making that an entry only, um, we would be maintaining the existing exit only. On the right-hand side of the lot and then as, as we're proposing here, changing the Fairfield. Exit only in, or um entrance only into uh entry and exit. Um, um, to the site, to allow kind of traffic flow to naturally migrate out to the, to uh side uh streets. And then there also includes a um, a landscaping plan in here. So within the existing site plan, there is an existing grassed area. Um, we're proposing um beautifying that. Creating a more usable space for um the existing uh retail tenants. Um, and tenants of the uh vesta building uh also on the site. Um, but that would be kind of for public use.
Okay, thanks. Um, this item is available for public comment, anyone wishing? Please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
My name's Mike Alfiero, I'm co-owner of Harborfish. Uh, I reside in Cape Elizabeth, Four Peoples Cove Road. And I'm here to voice concerns and frustration with the current situation. We have had a number of uh vehicles trying to pull in and hitting the uh. Granite separator between the entrance and ex, uh, entrance and exit. Blowing out tires, car damage, uh, this is, this has been going on for close to three years. And we have voiced our frustration with the town and nothing's been done until hopefully now. So this is a, when this problem, when these problems happen like this, it's a direct reflection on our business. And we have to deal with the, the fallout from it, with the cars being damaged, triple A coming in. The customers coming in complaining to us. Uh, my staff is hearing it, and I'm sure you're gonna hear from John with Rosemont, he's gonna speak. And I'm tired of it. I'll tell you, if I'd known this was gonna be this bad, we probably would have not done this project. We spent over five hundred thousand dollars investing in this project because the community wanted us here. Now we're asking for a little bit of help. I have customers that won't come to the business anymore. We have documentation, emails. I got one from a gentleman, Desmond Fitzgerald, who blew out his tires. And then also uh ruined seven hundred dollars worth of damage. He came into the store and our manager said, yes, this happens all the time. You need to call the town of Scarborough. He talked to the traffic engineer, said she was very nice, but said it's not our problem, it's the property owner's problem. So. Um. So I'm hoping that this group will accept the proposal from. Hebert Construction and Firehouse because uh we're, we're losing customers. And in this economy, we can't afford to lose customers. So I appreciate your time and giving this the attention it needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, my name's John Naylor. I live on forty-five Fleetwood Street in Portland, Maine. I am the owner of um Rosemont Market and Bakery and. Came out to the site, originally really liked it. Um, thought what we could do for the community is what we do for a lot of the communities that we're in. And we're in three or four other different communities where we supply local food to people, we support farmers. We do all of this stuff just to uh make sure that people have an ability to uh support their community. So. Over the last couple of years, just to follow along with what Mike was saying, it is really frustrating for us to um. Have customers come in and sit there and say, you know, we pulled in and, you know, the curbing, which was like ninety-degree angle. And it's granite curbing, so it's sharp. I'm, I don't know if any of you ever popped a tire on granite curbing. But it was to me not a very good design. And continually we keep getting these complaints and of course my staff has to deal with it. And then of course we're like, take it to the landlord and the landlord's like, we can't do anything with it, you gotta take it to the town. And it just keeps back and forth. I'm sure there's some kind of way to deal with this. Um, and I think the proposal that's put before you right now, which is to create just the entryway. I was there with uh, uh, Jennifer a couple of months ago. And also I was there with um, what is it, the city, the, the Scarborough, I'm trying to think of her name. Yeah, and we were standing there and why we were, oh.
That would be, that would be Angela.
I'm sorry, Angela, I'm sorry, I, I apologize. Anyway, so anyway, we're standing there and we're actually watching cars come in and, you know, going over the curbs and do it. It was really, I mean, it was obvious standing there that this is just not working. And um, I think the solution of just making a single entryway and then an, an exit and an entry on. What is Fairfield is a, is a reason, I think people at this point, I, as much as I hate to say it, they ignore it anyway, you know? And um, I think one way or the other, it's, you know, we should make it available to them. And on top of it, you know, um, it's a good way to actually, as I was reading the proposal, I agree with it. Is when you go out there and you make a right, you go down the street, you can get back on Black Point Road and you're, you can go that way too and come back around for traffic. It just gives people another alternative other than dealing with a very difficult turn in. And um, I'm kinda with Mike, I mean, we invest a lot of money in it, we thought that it was gonna be a great idea. And I think the difficulty with getting into that space is probably at least created a ten to twenty percent deficit. In what we could be doing in business, so, and it would be helpful. I mean, we're a small business, so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, and uh certainly appreciate those comments and um. Uh, anyone else? Do we have anybody online? A closing public comment and it's so ironic. Uh, by the way, the, the oysters you sell at Harborfish are like the best. Cuz I was there uh Friday to pick up oysters and I have a twenty-five hundred. Silverado pickup truck. And I was up against the, the middle of that and there was a car coming and I was like, I was driving a bus. And it really, you know, a pickup truck is a pickup truck. I think, my opinion, this makes perfect sense. And, and I, I would share that, just that anecdotal experience. Um, you know, if I was to ever go back there, and I do go back, and I love what you've done with, with the whole thing. I'm glad we have a vesta there housing uh some seniors. And I think the whole repurposing of this uh area of town was, was spot on. And you have been really, really great asset to our community. Um, and hearing from you and having you endorse these modification. Just brings it to my mind, this is the right approach to go. And uh, that's all I'm gonna say and I'm gonna turn it over to my colleagues. Go ahead. Okay, I'll get, Jen, you're next. Roger.
Okay, uh, thank you. Um, I think this is a big improvement too, because I've driven in there many times and it is challenging. We knew from the beginning it was gonna be challenging, the site was challenging. Um, I, I just have two questions. Um, and it regards the uh area over by Fairfield Road. Do you wanna get up there and? I'm looking at the signage. And in particular, sign number sixteen. God, I'm gonna get my, are, are these, are these standard signs or do you design? I mean, do you, does some, somebody make a sign? I mean. You can, you can arrange these signs in whatever design you want, right?
Correct, yes.
It seems to me the arrows would be kinda confusing if somebody just was looking at the arrows coming together instead of going the other way. Just, just an observation, right? And then the other question is. Um, I am, I think what you're gonna try and do is encourage most people to go back out on Westwood. Even though some can go, go back out on Fairfield, correct?
Yes, I mean, we'll, we'll, we will have directional signage and wayfinding signage within the lot. But I think a lot of that'll dictate on where the individual's next destination is going to be. Um, based off of how, you know, if they're on Fairfield Road, um, and they're gonna try to take a right. You know, they're, they're more likely to, to funnel out that way through the lot, but if they're gonna be trying to, you know, get in the queue or whatever. Um, they would, I would encourage them to use Westwood Avenue to get in the line and especially if they gotta, they go.
Yeah, you, you don't want anybody going on West, Westfield and trying to go south on Route One.
Well, well, good evening, Tom Arico, TY Lynn, Traffic Engineer for the project. I think you're right, Roger. I mean, I mean, again, it, I, I think it'll be a function of where you're going in terms of destinations, right? If you're going north, you're likely gonna, you're, you're gonna flow towards Fairfield. The beauty of, of going to West, I mean, it's kind of a. You know, it's difficult no matter where you're making that left from, right? I mean, I mean, Route One's busy, gaps are limited. But the queue does spill back from Oak Hill, and so that's what makes it difficult in terms of the making left out of Fairfield. And so there's some benefit of going, going to Westwood.
I, I guess my question is, when you, when somebody's leaving. If they for some reason don't decide to go out onto West, Westwood right away and they start to meander around. Towards the back of the, you know, the Fairfield side, are there gonna be like? Arrows or something like that or some directional signs to encourage them to still try and get back out onto, onto West, Westwood? Or I, is it?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think in my, I had a memo and it sort of speaks to signage on site and some, some of the, some of the um. The things I recommend in terms of wayfinding. I think Simon talked about wayfinding, so there's gonna be some wayfinding signing in terms of what we think makes sense. In terms of going either north on Route One or south on Route One. And then some, some other changes that need to, need to take place, right? I mean, just, you know, currently now, the Fairfield entrance is an entry. Well, signage needs to change in terms of removing, doing on enter signs, there's some, so there's some changes on site that need to take place as part of. You know, making that clear in terms of what's allowed and what's not allowed and then wayfinding to certain, certain locations.
I mean, I, I totally agree with this, but I, I know when this initially be, before us originally. Um, the residents on Fairfield were very adamant about not having too much traffic going down there. And I know in your reports, it's gonna be insignificant. And it is a good way to try and get people to go back out onto Black Point Road, go up to the lights and then head south. Which, it's a safer way to do.
Well, and I think people do it now, and I think, I think someone made a comment, I mean, I'm not, I'm not suggesting it's, it's certainly not a legal movement. But people do go out on the Fairfield now. I, I was out there observing conditions, you know, a month or so ago as related to this, this application. And people were exiting out onto Fairfield from the site. You also can do it from Westwood. So I think if you really wanna get to Black Point, and I would do that, I would probably go out westward and circulate to get to Black Point. Um, so I don't know that it will change much, and I think you're right. I mean, my estimate wasn't a significant amount of traffic that would go that route. Um, so I, I think the impact to the neighborhood is, is somewhat minimal.
I, I know, from, from my experience, when I'm in front of the stores. And I do go to Oak Hill, well, to the intersection to go down east on Black Point Road.
Yeah.
But I take a look at the queuing on Route One.
Yeah, yeah.
And if it's, you know, if it's um, so I do go out onto Westwood.
Right.
And, and right now, because I kinda, I do, I do honor the people on Fairfield to try and.
Sure.
You know, that, that was, that was their wishes, so.
Sure.
If it's not too bad. You know, that, that was, that was their wishes. So if it's not too bad, I could just wait. But it's a, it's a challenge. I mean, totally, your businesses are great. So. Thank you.
Thanks, Roger. Jen, you want to go ahead?
Sure, thank you. I will just start by acknowledging, as was mentioned, that I did meet with a couple of the representatives from the site back during the summertime as part of a a project that my company is working on along Route One here. Did not necessarily pertain specifically to the site. It's much more regional in nature, safety focused study on Route One. But I did, I did just want to mention that and we sort of, we did kind of talk about some of these issues. Most of which I referred these folks to, back to Angela and, and suspected that they would come back around to this process. So anyway, I did just want to put that out there. I'm happy to recuse myself if the rest of the board shows he's fit. And I will just, I'll leave it at that.
I don't have any concerns with your, your position here and, and the work that you do. And I'm seeing no from my colleague, your colleagues. So any, any input you want to provide, feel free.
Okay, thank you. I I have one, one question for the team here and one concern. My question is, I'm curious why the choice was made to for the driveway along Route One to be an entrance as opposed to an exit.
I guess that's a question for the applicant.
I think our reasoning was, you know, it's, it's aligns with coming upon to the storefront and trying to drive business into the site. As opposed to either trying to get in advance of the site or just beyond the, the, you know, the places of business. So we funnel in through the middle and then out through the sides. That was, that was our logic and reasoning.
Okay, thank you. I think my concern then is about, and I, I did, I did witness this and you don't have to be standing right at the site, but you can even just be driving past to see folks attempting to make any kind of turn into this driveway, but primarily the lefts into the site. They're, they seem to be doing so at, you know, they're doing it quickly. And this is presumably it's to avoid, you know, it's to take advantage, as Tom mentioned, of limited breaks in traffic here. So when they see an opening and they're crossing two lanes of through traffic from that middle turn lane. So your options are, you know, your, your windows of opportunity to safely cross those two lanes are, are even less than they would be with just one lane. But so for folks doing that from the left turn lane, taking a left into the site, they're doing so quickly. And so I think this is where you're seeing, you know, when people drive fast, they, they need more room to do that safely. And if they don't have that room, as has been the case, I think previously, that's why you're seeing, you know, tire strikes on the curving and rutting of landscaping and things like that. And so I, I appreciate the, you know, the, the directionality choice here in terms of driving traffic to the site. But I also, what I'm also hearing you say is that folks are, they're concerned and you're, the, the customers here are aware of, you know, some of these traffic and safety concerns. And I guess I would just ask if, you know, if you felt that it might be an option to have this be an exit only driveway onto Route One. And the reason for this is because anyone pulling out of your site is going to, they're going to have to come to a stop first before they make that turn, whether it be a right turn or a left turn. And that's just the nature of driving and there will be a stop sign there. And so they'd be making that movement more slowly. And so I just, I think that would, I think it would be a safer option for people driving to your site. I think it would be a safer option for anyone walking across your parking lot here if they've, you know, parked on either side of the entrance and they're walking towards your storefronts. And, you know, and perhaps, and so anyway, that's my, that's my thought about the, the Route One access point. I do think that the, the two-way entrance onto Fairfield Road makes some sense. And I would, I would hope that at this point, you know, the neighboring communities would sort of have, you know, I, I don't think that change will result in a significant change in volume to the folks that live further down on Fairfield or Westwood. And hopefully it just, it does just make it easier even for them to access the site if that's what they're doing too.
So interesting thought, Jen. I, I am thinking about it. It would, under a scenario where it becomes an exit only from the site, it would, in my mind, result in most people from the north turning left at Fairfield instead of at the site drive, just because of the way the, you know, going to Westwood and how you get into the site, you're somewhat, you're somewhat, it's somewhat circuitous. So I think.
Would there, would there be an opportunity to, to have a discussion both from the board side and/or the applicant to make that the first point of entrance to the site on, when you pull onto Westwood instead of that being exit only to make that a full access driveway? I think that would solve a huge number of problems.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's, I mean, I mean, it's an interesting thought. I mean, I haven't quite got my head around everything you just said. I was just thinking fundamentally in terms of the, in terms of the, you know, the, the driveway Route One becoming, becoming an exit only. My opinion would be that you'd end up under, assuming everything else stays the same, you'd have most left turn movements from the north turning left onto Fairfield. I'd rather have vehicles turn into the site mid-block and then at Fairfield because of the backup from Oak Hill is going to happen and block Fairfield more often than the mid, mid driveway. I haven't thought about other changes to other driveways and rethink the whole entire circulation of the site. But my opinion is as, as proposed, it's probably the safest scenario without any other changes to driveways.
The other, the other issue, because maybe to some extent it takes the one half dozen of the other. But the other concern that I would have around changing this driveway onto Route One to only be in one direction, regardless of which direction that is, is that if you had folks who opt not to follow the signage, whether it be do not enter from Route One or do not enter from your parking lot, the risk for someone not doing that and meeting someone coming in the other direction would be much higher, particularly given, you know, people trying to like zoom into the site if they were getting through Route One traffic. So low likelihood, but that did just seem like a little, a little bit riskier, a little bit riskier to me. And, and I will just remind the board and perhaps for those that were not on the board when we saw this originally for site plan. One of the great things about this site, in my opinion, is that it was such a tremendous reuse. And I, I appreciate that there's, there's a cost and perhaps even a frustration level associated with that. And I think just overall, I know that, I know that this has been challenging for you folks. And I, but I'm glad that you've stuck with it and that you're here bringing this concern to us at this point. But part of that reuse really hit, my recollection is that part of that reuse really hinged on, you know, being attached to these, these existing driveway points and many of them in their pre-existing configuration with, of course, the large exception being that most of the frontage of the site used to be nothing, no, no curving, no driveway. It was all driveway. And so that's kind of how we ended up here. But anyway, just, just a reminder there that, you know, if, if some of these sort of side driveways look as though they're an odd, you know, odd configuration because they were not really designed for this site. They were designed for the last site's use. And so, you know, a nod here to, to trying to make use of what, what is already there without making significant changes. But I think maybe what we've all learned a little bit is that sometimes that, that can be, that can work out for the better.
Well, that's insightful, Jen. Thanks for sharing that. I just want to make sure, Rachel, you did want to?
Yes, I did. This is one of those, let's wind up my time. The, when this first came before us many years ago, I believe I was the only one who voted against it. And I voted against it because of the access issue and the parking issue, the access and the egress and the concerns I had about traffic accidents along Route One. And I didn't think at that time that the design was good. I thought we were going to face a lot of problems. So I, I'm going to resist the opportunity to say, I told you so. And instead move on and take a look at the, the landscaping that you're proposing. In terms of, in terms of what you're proposing for the access and egress, I, I think this goes a long way to improve things. I'm just not clear because of the location at Oak Hill that it's going to be, it's going to be enough. I think somebody is going to come back to us in about four years and say, now the traffic is such that we have difficulty getting out. But if this helps the businesses there, I think that's great because they're good businesses and they're good neighbors in Scarborough. I have a question. I'm looking at the landscaping plan that you have here and I'm looking at, I'm looking at the fact that it looks like two-point font and my eyes only take in ten-point font unless they have a magnifying glass. The, the black outline around the patio, is that another walkway?
Yes, you're talking, what would be like, there's the patio by Barano's and just be like beyond the fencing of that? Yes, that would be like a stone dust pathway.
Okay, because when we did, when we originally approved this, we approved that eating area as open space and public space accessible to everybody. And then at some point the stockade came up. I'm glad you're getting the access back. I wish somebody would take the stockade down, but that's helpful that you have that walkway. It's also helpful what you're doing in terms of the design of the, the park that's there. That's kind of set there with weeds for quite a while. So I appreciate the effort that you're putting there. I appreciate your efforts to ensure that there's a continuous walkway around the building site, around the whole site. Something that we, we started with and we lost when the stockade fence went in. So I, I think this all is an improvement. I'm just a little afraid because of the traffic, because of the location, it's not easy that a future planning board is going to be seeing it again and hopefully somebody else will have a better idea. By the way, one of the reasons that we had the exit, the entrance on Fairfield only one way is because there was a concern that people would go out that exit through the parking lot, through Amato's parking lot and down Black Point Road. So anything that you can do to remind people to, as they leave the site, to go down Fairfield and not decide to cross through the, the parking lot, that, that would be very helpful. But it, it's, the, the businesses there are wonderful. It's a good idea. We're still, I think we're still going to be struggling in years to come. But I appreciate all of the effort that you've made here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. James?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I find all the changes here to be positive. I think whatever we can do, I also drive a full-size truck and entering on the Route One side is always a challenge. Personally, and this might be my sort of hot take on it, but I'd like to see the flexible removable bollards just gone and just have it all wide open in there just to give you even more space and more flexibility. So if somebody does pull in and somebody happens to cross, they can maneuver around them without having to go through the flexible bollards. But I guess Simon's going to tell me, by the way, there's no relation between myself and Hebrew construction.
So the flexible bollards are out?
Great.
That was, that was discussed at staff level and that's where we proposed doing like the three-inch slope granite curving. That, so that way it's more forgiving if say, we can kind of do a stamped pattern on the concrete instead of that to delineate that this is not a driving aisle beyond, you know, on the the non-traffic side of it. But if someone were to, you know, or an emergency vehicle was to take that turn or in the winter, it's a little bit more forgiving than certainly it is now.
Yeah.
And so that, that is what was kind of proposed at our latest workshop.
Great, thank you. No.
I feel we can get our pickup trucks through that.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately just the more flexibility you have in, in people going in and out of there is just going to make it that much easier for the space. So the fewer obstacles that are in there, the better. Yeah, I, I think entering and exiting onto, onto Fairfield Road is necessary in order to, to improve this, improve the site. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, James. Tyler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also drive a truck and have had difficulties since we're going around.
I'm the denominator here. You live in Maine, you have a truck.
I want as well, just to be clear. You know, I think this is a really good solution to this issue. I am actually personally of the opinion that I think having this be an entrance is preferable to an exit only. Just insofar as if the entrances were to come onto Fairfield or Westwood, somebody entering the site could potentially have people trying to go south onto Route One, crossing over their lane as they're coming into those roads, which I just see as sort of another hazard rather than having kind of a dedicated entry only at the middle of the site. So I actually sort of see that as a positive. My concern with this is just in kind of this transition period as patrons become familiar with the new traffic patterns. You know, the first several months seemed to be the time where you were likely to have somebody trying to go out that way that they're familiar with that, having kind of entrance and egress. So with that sort of concern in mind, you know, I would maybe just put out there to take under consideration increased temporary signage or something to the effect as folks are kind of getting familiar with the new traffic pattern, that where they're supposed to go and that this entry off of Route One is now one way. You know, something very visible and you can't have too much signage, just but especially kind of on a temporary basis would just be something I would recommend maybe taking into consideration. But otherwise I think this is a good improvement to the site. And yeah, appreciate, appreciate the proposal, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. All said. Well, I, I'll just wrap this up by acknowledging, you know, Jen's, not only her expertise, but her thoughts there. But I also realized that this is a very active area in town. And with these small businesses there that are, that are busy, I think restricting or not having an entrance off of Route One would be a detriment to our, to the tenants there. So I'm inclined to continue with what, the way I was thinking and I don't mean to go against the, the traffic expert, but I'm willing to try this method before saying, let's shut off any sort of access to the site from Route One. Angela?
Can I just add maybe a question or clarifying a little bit? Because I think some from the statements made by the applicant, hearing kind of the planning board, this was something that we talked about at the site with the applicant. That was something I was like, well, what if we tried to think outside the box? Because we all can appreciate the issues out there. I think the problem arises when it comes back on the town to say the town forced this design. And I want to just clarify that you guys were approached with a design in 2021 that was said, this shall, this will work. that was said, this shall this will work, and we review that. We're now showing another design, and I made it very clear on the site, you need to bring your traffic engineer in, which I appreciate Tom being here tonight to kind of talk through that. But again, it's not the town's design. It is the applicant's design. And so I think back to Jen's point or even your point saying, we should listen to hate to go against the traffic engineer. You have a traffic engineer that I'm saying is, and I guess maybe I haven't heard that yet, but saying this is a solution. Okay? So I just want to put it back to the applicant that it's not our role to design the site. It is our role to respond to the design that's provided. And while I tried to help and say, let's throw out all kinds of ideas and see what sticks, I can also appreciate Jen's concerns in that. And so I just want to put that back in the right context that it's not the town's design.
I appreciate that, Angela. And I've said it lots of times, the burden of proof is always on the applicant. And I don't I if this fails, it I promise you, I would never say anything, oh, that was silly of you even having that conversation. But I truly don't think this will. I I don't know. And I don't think any of us have crystal balls that can say, this is the fix. But do I think it is better than what it is currently? I have to say yes. And that's where I'm coming down the line. All right, I for the audience that virtually, he had his thumbs up. If you go to the podium, please. I'm not using this as public comment, but further in information.
I I just I do want to acknowledge that, Angela, and I do appreciate that. Because, you know, when you're in the middle of somebody who's very frustrated about their vehicle being, you know, damaged, tire being damaged, and then they come to us and we're like, oh, look, this gives a lot more clarity to like how I can approach. If something like that happens, I could approach a customer and say, you know, this was our plan. We went to the city, the city, you know, they acknowledged this is our plan. We did our best and we'll do our best again to, you know, make things right. So I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Hopefully, those conversations will be less with your customers. All right. Yeah.
I just want to acknowledge that. I think that's a very graceful approach to this. And Angela, I really appreciate your comment as well. I think as we think about how this how this goes, I think there's a there's education for all of us and would just encourage all of the wonderful businesses as I access to my full-size pickup truck that they would educate your customers, especially as we head into the busy holiday season. So just really thank you for that comment.
I think I think and I I appreciate you giving this attention. And Angela, I I acknowledge what you're saying. I think for us, it's really when when customers start not showing up. And that's that's that gets your attention and it becomes very emotional for us. So I just want to acknowledge that.
I I appreciate that. And I kind of let things free flow here tonight with with this. And that's typically not something we do. You presented your your evidence and you did your burden of proof to whatever satisfaction we all collectively come to. With that, I do have a motion. And I move to approve the project titled FHV Parking Lot Striping Proposed by Firehouse Venture LLC. The project is depicted in plan set prepared by Eucorn Engineering dated 10/23/25. The application is approved with the following findings and conditions. Findings: The project will include park entrance modification and the addition of a landscape park area at 246 US Route One. The planning board finds the project meets the requirements of the site plan review and zoning ordinances with the following conditions. Condition one, prior to the start of construction, the applicants just schedule a pre-construction meeting. The meeting will include town staff, the developer and their site contractor, and is to be coordinated through the planning department. The below must be addressed prior to the scheduling of the precondition meeting. A, address comments in the traffic review memo dated 11/17/25. B, provide a full, a final full plan set to the planning department for review and approval. And C, payment of all review fees and invoices. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rachel. Doreen, would you take the role?
McMahon King?
Yes.
Rachel Henrickson?
Yes.
James Seibert?
Yes.
Roger Beely?
Yes.
And Jennifer Led?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. And and thanks for the efforts and appreciate your time telling us about the trials and tribulations of owning a small business. And keep those oysters coming. All right, we're moving on to 5.01 Minor Development Reviews. Autumn or Helen?
None at this time.
5.02 Administration Amendments?
We did receive one request for 41 Gorham Road, just the South Hill and Bedford Savings. They are replacing a monument sign. And in doing so, they will be removing one tree and adding two shrubs on the Gorham roadside. And they're removing and replacing some dead and diseased trees on the Hannaford Drive side.
Oh, okay, yes. Thank you. And now we're in correspondence, 6.01.
None at this time.
6.02 Planning Board Comments. I'll be quiet and let my colleagues start. Anybody? Don't wish us a Thanksgiving. That's my part. Okay. Go ahead, Roger.
I just I just want to mention the the workshop that Autumn's going to be doing on Wednesday evening on growth.
On growth?
And she did a good job to last last month. And I just think it's got to be advertised and people should look at it. I took a glimpse at it today online, and there's a lot of information there. I just hope people at home are going to be able to see the visuals because there's a there's a lot of text and everything there. So I know a lot of work went into it, and it's important because we keep hearing that in the community.
It's a hot button.
Yes.
For sure. Thank you, Roger. Anyone else? All right, well, we're wrapping up our November meeting, and that means turkey time. So enjoy time with family, friends, and we'll see you in December. Thanks. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Rachel. Second? I will. Thank you. We're done.